Good evening. It is 6:30 on August 27, 2024. We have a quorum. I'm calling this session of the Bastrop City Council to order the City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene recess or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. Ladies and gentlemen, we're very pleased tonight to have two of our Girl Scouts from the Lost Pines Elementary Girl Scouts troop, Harper Taywater and Everly Foster. If you will step up here. Ladies and you would all please stand while these young ladies, ladies in the pledges. Turn around this way. Let's look at the flags.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual and liberty and justice for all. I'm honored to take this flag. I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Let's give these young ladies a round of applause. Look, look, like I said, he's here to take your picture. Thank you very, very much. Now I'd like to call one of our police chaplains, Robert Oliver, if you'll step up.
Let's pray. Holy Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather to consider the affairs of our community. Thank you for these men and women who've gathered not only to serve in office, but here to give advice and counsel and witness to these proceedings. We pray that justice and righteousness would prevail. Give them a concern for regard for those who are downtrodden and unfortunate in our community. Give them vision for planning for the future, good stewardship for the resources that we have, and we pray that all this might prosper for your glory and for your name. Glory be to God the Father, glory be to God the Son, glory be to God the Spirit, ever three and ever one, as it was in the beginning, now, and evermore shall be. Amen.
Thank you so much. Y'all may be seated. Moving right along into Presentations Four, into the Mayor's Report. I would certainly prefer to use this time differently, but because I've gotten several phone calls from the events of last meeting, I felt I owed it to several people an explanation. I'm offering my regrets to my veteran brothers and sisters, as well as others in the community on being unable to emcee the November Farm Street Opry. Some members of this council actively and punitively denied me the opportunity based upon falsehoods that they themselves have promoted in a variety of activities. As a veteran, I specifically chose the November date to help serve as a lead-in to our Heroes and Hot Rods Veterans March and Red, White, and Blue Appreciation Banquet. I'll remind everyone that some members of this council's punitive measure based upon false premises prohibits city staff from scheduling or proposing that the mayor speak at city-sponsored events without council's prior approval. I specifically requested this so as to not to jeopardize or compromise our staff. Regardless of whether one has the power, one does not have to use such for their own purpose. The continuation of attacks on me, the office of mayor, the community in general, and now the veterans' community specifically reminds me of the 1970s when we, as serving military, were advised to stay in the shadows in our own country due to politics, ignorance, and government actions. It was a tough time to serve our country, but some of us did. Those who have not served may not realize that soldiers rather work for peace, but we are prepared for war. Those who are serving now and veterans know that win or lose, fighting hurts. For the community's sake, I still extend the olive branch that I extended on the 13th. Whether those who wish to do me harm accept that offer or not, I am prepared either way, and our citizens are watching. We will now move to 4B, Council Members' Report. Mayor Protim, do you have anything you wish to offer? Propaganda. All right. I will not ask you to define that. Councilmember Fosler.
Good evening, everyone. Bear with me because my council report is going a bit different direction tonight. Our role as council members is to be critical in our thinking, not critical in our spirits. We have gotten off mission and it shows. Though I am new to the council, I take full responsibility for our functioning up here, and I take full responsibility for our cohesiveness. I don't get the luxury of pointing my finger anymore. I have the responsibility of looking in the mirror, and I take this seriously. And that's why I want to talk about the power of redemption stories. Redemption stories showcase characters who have stumbled in the past, but through moments of self-discovery and hard work, they confront their mistakes. They try again and succeed, usually through a heroic act of sacrifice, breaking free from the bondage of their past and moving to a journey of healing and renewal. And why do we love redemption stories so? It's because when flawed characters embark on a journey of self-discovery and transformation, it resonates deeply with us, not just because all good stories are journeys, but because these allow us to sit comfortably with our own mistakes and flaws. So I'll go first. Let it begin with me. Where I was critical in my spirit, please journey with me in one of my flaws because though it started with a mean comment, it eventually ended up right in the heart of the matter. Last meeting, I told another council member that his proposal stinks, and that was rude of me, and I apologize. I later dissected the situation to get to the root of it, and his idea was actually quite good. The wording was complicated, but that's another issue, but it was the timing that was an absolute deal breaker for me. It wasn't on the agenda. It wasn't written for anyone. It was proposed outside the vetting of the Charter Review Commission, and it was presented after citizen comments had closed, and that was the problem for me. And from the gasps in the audience, I knew this was also a problem for you. So I couldn't pinpoint all of this in that moment, but I wanted to bring my realization to you now. This is the issue with legislating from the dais, that when we change things on the fly, it bypasses the process of hearing from the public, and that is what stinks. Your idea was great, but that is what stinks. So yes, we have the ability to word our motions however we like, and yes, if we have the votes, it will pass, but I am calling on us as council members to go and be above and beyond our granted powers with additional considerations. Beyond the questions of is it legal and is it within my power to do this, we also need to be asking, has the public had a chance to weigh in, and does this build trust? All four of those have to be a resounding yes to get my vote. We, as your elected officials up here, are on a trust-building mission right now. We are writing our own redemption story, and Bastrop is writing its own redemption story as well. So this message goes out to all those who are hunkered in their corners with their teams, to those who are clenched so tightly to achieving a particular outcome, to those who have dug in and doubled down, this message is for you. Transformation cannot find you in your corners. Come out. Let's journey together. Let's write our own redemption story together. May none of us know the ending until we arrive at it together. May it surprise us all. May it be filled with grace, forgiveness, and trust, and may we all be transformed in the process. Thank you. I love you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Pluckett.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say, thank you Lord for the rain, and it's cooler, and we are not used to this in August, so I'm so thankful. And I'm thankful that you are all here tonight participating in your government. This is your government and everyone watching. So, and I always say, we're here to serve you. You hired us, and this is what we do. We work for you. Before I announce a couple of things going on in the community, I just want to say, I'm a member of the Rotary Club, and we have a four-way test that we take every time we meet. And Rotary is about service above self, and that is what we should be about too, service above self. But our number-one test in Rotary is, is it true? And we should always do that. We should ask each other that. We should always be make, just make sure that everything is true, that we pass that test. So I think that's a great fundamental thing, and I would love to see things written on these walls, you know, for our different ethics. Alan, our attorney, gave a wonderful speech last week at our TML conference, and he, the speech was on ethics, and I thought it was a great idea, Alan, when you kind of mentioned, you know, we should put some things maybe up and around so we can all remember who we serve, is it true, and why we're here. That being said, let me tell you a couple of things, because I want to put the focus on our community, not us. The Cur Center this Saturday at 5:30, we have to say goodbye to Harriet Tubman. So if you haven't seen her at the Cur Center, please go by and see her, because it's an amazing bronze statue. She's going to leave on Saturday, but we have Ms. Opal Lee, who is the grandmother of Juneteenth, that's going to say goodbye to her. So we get to go meet with Ms. Opal Lee to say goodbye to Harriet, 5:30 this Saturday at the Cur Center. So please join us there. Also, next Thursday, September 5, is the Farm Street Opry. So if you haven't been there, you are missing out. And I'm not going to promote myself as being the host on this one, but I happen to be hosting it on next Thursday. So I would love to see you all there and join, and let's just commune together and enjoy ourselves because we are a community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. Couple of things I did this week, or in the last two weeks. Carrie, Councilmember Fosler, and I attended the TML Land Use Essentials Workshop in Austin. Very, very good workshop. There was a very, they created like this town, and every piece of the workshop was about building this town and what you could and couldn't do with the land in that town. There was a very good piece on planning and zoning, and by the time we were done, I even told the speakers, I really felt like I was in a planning and zoning meeting, and I think that they will come to your city and give that presentation to our commission, and I hope that maybe that's something we can work out, because it was a very, very good presentation on planning and zoning. We also attended the TML Region 10 meeting in Buta. All council members were there, to include our city manager, and our city attorney spoke at the event. So that was also a very good event and an opportunity to meet other cities and council members in other cities and talk about things that are happening in each other's cities. So a lot of TML going on the past couple of weeks with trainings. I also attended this past weekend, the last weekend of Treasure Island, at the Bastrop Opera House. It was a really, really, really good show. I don't, I couldn't remember watching Treasure Island, so I forgot about Long John Silver, but the actors were really, really, really good, and I actually wanted to go see it again with some more people this weekend, and it's closed. But I just love what the Opera House is doing with the youth down there. There were a lot of new actors that I hadn't seen before. Some more people are getting involved and doing acting for the first time. The next show is going to be Young Frankenstein, running from September 13 through the 29th. So please get out to our Opera House and support them. I will be, I was going to announce the actual annual, annual red, white, and blue Veterans Appreciation Banquet. It is scheduled for November the 9th, and you can go to their website, RWBVeterans@bastropcounty@gmail.com to get more information. They're also seeking volunteers. I will be volunteering for that event, and you can go to their website to purchase tickets. So that will be November the 9th. I'm looking forward to being part of that. And then the last thing I wanted to do is to congratulate the Cultural Arts Commission, Bastrop County Cares, and everyone who participated in the Bastrop Bayla Beats Street Dance. Did I say that right, Maria? Showcase and competition. So we all know that breakdancing was part of the Olympics this year. It came to Bastrop, and it was a really, really fun time. I think I ended up, I know some of y'all were there all day, Carrie and Maria, but I, I think I was planning on staying an hour, and I stayed four. It brought back a lot of memories for me, growing up, back when it was called breakdancing. And there was a very famous movie called Breakin' that actually broke breakdancing and made it popular mainstream. So a lot of nostalgia. Can't wait to see what you guys do with that next year. There was a very energetic crowd. Just very, very well done. Very well done, and thank you for bringing that to Bastrop. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We will move into, Madam City Manager, I don't see a report from you. Are you just going to incorporate that into?
No, sir. My items are at number six because they're a bit lengthy.
Got it. I see it now. Thank you. Trying not to get too far ahead of myself. 5A, receive an update on the Old Iron Bridge rehabilitation, the Fairview Cemetery expansion, the Agnes Street extension, and improvement projects. Mr. Rosales.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council, some good news. So we're going to go over a couple of projects that we're working on and give you a status. Old Iron Bridge Rehabilitation, the goal of this project, to reopen the bridge as a pedestrian walkway. Currently, the design phase is at 90%. We should get, or sorry, it's, and going to 90%, we should get those plans by October 8. We plan to bid this project by November of 2024. Estimated construction is about 16 months after that, so we tentatively completed around December, given no, no changes, no, nothing adverse. That is, a couple of pictures. This is when they were out doing the survey of the bridge in its current state. The picture on the, on the right kind of identifies some of the spalding and cracking of the concrete and some of the issues that they found during the, during the survey. Next one is Fairview Cemetery Expansion. We have an in-house civil improvements that are currently going on. If you go to the cemetery, first gate, go all the way to the back to the right on the, I guess would be the southeast corner. They, city staff has been out doing some grading of the roadway and providing the extension and water lines. We did this to reduce the cost of the overall project. Instead of having a third party do it, we're doing it in-house. Still in progress. There's some pictures here in a second I'll show you. But this expansion, it provides 682 burial plots. It also adds a columbarium addition, which will receive a CID bid set by September. The base contract will provide an additional 288 in that columbarium. Some pictures, maybe? Colin? Oh, yeah. There you go. This is the road improvement on the left side. They're out there working. And then on the right side, it's kind of what the expansion will look like, the road coming out. Colin, will it, will it zoom in, Colin? Oh, go back. Can you zoom in on the, on the right picture, on the, kind of what it's going to look like? The columbarium's going to be there in the center. The circles are the trees, and then each of the squares are the different burial plots that'll be added. This is significantly needed. Currently, right now, if you were to come and ask for a new plot, we have none. We only have what's existing and already been sold. So we're trying to push this project quite along pretty fast so we can get some plots available to citizens.
To get the plots, not to fill?
No, 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 no. No hurry on the filling, just to get them, yeah, so that they're available. Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. Agnes Street, this is a big one. I'll provide a slide here in a second that shows where it's at. But Agnes Street, this is from Walmart to FM 304. The bid phase is in progress, so we are currently out for bid. The bids are due September 19 at noon. Today, we had a pre-bid meeting. We had some contractors show up and ask questions today. Had a good meeting this afternoon. Contract, award date is October 1, and the idea is that we would do a notice to proceed and some pre-construction that following week. The goal is to get substantial completion by, within 12 months, so tentatively mid-October of 2025, you'll have a street that is ready to drive. So this is kind of what it looks like. Colin, you're going to have to zoom in on the, can you start from the left side where 304 is at? So 304, you, if any of you have been over there behind Seton Hospital, we currently have one section of Agnes Street. We plan to expand and do a boulevard style, do the southern portion of the boulevard. So we'll widen it out all the way to where it's currently dead ends, and then we will continue Agnes and provide it to the others where Sterling Avenue connects. And so that goal is to have that open by October of 2025. That is much needed, and we're excited to see that go. This is a grant-funded project, and pretty bad needed. So, any questions? I think that's my last project. Yep?
I think, I think an explanation of the delay, people, that grant was received some time back, and I want people to understand that that just started the process.
Yes.
We still had to apply for the, apply for the grant and jump through all the federal hoops, and then there were some acquisition problems.
Yeah, land acquisition, land acquisition was one of the issues, acquiring some of the properties adjacent to where the Seton line is, yes, and also the grant. The grant has a pretty good, we did GLO, and it has a pretty good wait period from the date you submit to they do all of the evaluation of your application, environmental studies, all sizes. But yes, we've gotten through that. Project's ready to go. Hopefully, we get some good contractor and get moving. Last, all three of these projects are, I think I've met her one time. She told me not to do this, so I'm going to apologize. Elizabeth Wick is our, one of our project managers. This, all three of these projects are hers. She's doing a great job and got them lined up pretty good. Elizabeth, you want to stand up?
You're very popular right now. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Yes, just for reference, point of reference for our citizens, Andres, could you tell, or show us maybe where the street is? I don't know if it's Sterling, that goes, we all know where Southside Barbecue is, so could you point out that street that will be accessed?
Yes, and, and I'm glad you brought Southside. That reminds me about Orchard. Colin, can you, yeah, there you go. So Seton is there. Colin, if you go to the, go to the right, come down some. So yes, so Orchard Parkway is labeled there, next to Southside Market. Orchard Parkway is going to come down south. The developer has a, is going to start that kind of when we start our project. Hopefully, they meet at the same point. He's going to tie that in, so you should be able to go from Walmart all the way across to Agnes, and then go up to Orchard Parkway and get on, and get on to 71, or turn into 71 and avoid Hassler if you had to, and get to Walmart, or get to Pecan Park neighborhood, or get to Seton. And so theoretically, you should be able to go from Walmart all the way to 304 to Home Depot and go all the way back without ever having to get on 71 on the southern portion.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. So I have some questions about the overall project, going back to the Old Iron Bridge.
Old Iron Bridge? Okay.
So we didn't, we never got a design from Kimley Horn.
No, we got a study.
That was just the study. So I went back, though, and I looked, and their, their breakdown was to restore the bridge to normal capacity for pedestrian use was 10.5. Restoring the bridge to a deck park was, with amenities and benches, is 11 million. Demolish the bridge, 4.75. Demolish the trust bands, 4 million. So I was trying to determine, because our estimated cost is 17,000, or 17 million, I'm sorry. So what increased the cost from, because their estimate for the deck park and amenities and benches was 11 million. What increases to 17?
Elizabeth, are you able to answer? Time, I would say.
That's a lot of millions for a couple of years' time.
Correct. You're saying that's the increase.
All the way around.
So yes, the cost of construction increases over time, but additionally, the bridge continues to deteriorate over time, so those two combined leads to an increased cost.
Yeah, I just felt like it was an exorbitant amount, you know, but I'm not in construction. I don't know how much construction stuff costs, but that's, that's a lot of millions of dollars in just a few years' time.
It is, but it's all detailed out in the plans. Everything is calculated and numbered, so they have an explanation for all the price increase, well, all the prices.
That is the engineer's opinion of probable cost, so whenever we do go to bid, it could be lower. It could also be higher. So we'll see what the, when, when we do go to bid.
And does the design, so does the 17 million include the work for the critical repairs that were identified by Kimley?
Yes, those repairs that were identified, and they also, when they did the survey, the actual survey of the bridge, they identified additional repairs that were necessary.
So when, when we do design, because I guess I got the impression that we need to do those critical repairs first, and then before we build out, you know, and make it beautiful. So all of that's part of the design?
Yes, correct.
Even the critical repairs?
Critical repairs, critical repairs, and then adding, because we are adding new decking, so the weight of the new decking, they're making, when they make their critical repairs, they're also adding structural components to, for future, for like long-term stability of the, of the bridge, and then also the design of, yeah, for the weight of the bridges, the weight of the pedestrians, they're taking all that, and so all that got calculated into the new design.
So that will be done first, I'm assuming?
I'm assuming, I would assume, they're going to start at 1.
It should be done in conjuncture.
Okay.
So they're going to repair it and make it a pedestrian-like, nice walkway, so at the same time.
And since we can't do the decking, do you think that will bring down the cost of that 17 million at all?
The decking is required for the stability as well.
No, I don't mean the decking, the overlooks, I'm sorry.
The overlooks are not included in this rehabilitation because of structural issues. The bridge is not designed to withstand the overlook, nor is it, nor does it work with the historical aspect of the bridge, because it is a historical landmark.
Right. My question, though, is, does it reduce the cost at all, because that's a completely different design?
They would have, they would have provided that as an alternate bid, and then we could have added that and above.
Oh, got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay. And then my last question is on Agnes. So the memo that we received on August 23rd didn't address the widening of Agnes as part of the project. Is that still part of the project?
The widening?
The widening.
You're talking about the original?
Were we going to add a couple of lanes into the merge?
So it's going to be two lanes all the way from one side to the other? Is that what you're asking?
No, I thought there was more.
At one time, there was, it has been redesigned. At one time, there was a bottleneck at 71, and it also did not have sidewalks.
Oh, yes.
So we sent it back to redesign.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Where it connects is Seton. We, originally, the design did not, it only went, it was only a tie-in from one side where Sterling is to Seton, and then, and so that would have been only that, that portion. We added the additional portion all the way to 304 and widened it so that it matches the whole way through. So it has a two, two, two lane from 304 all the way to.
Right. I didn't see that on the memo, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, so, yes, it is in there.
All right, thank you.
That was also some ad time, because we did send it back. The original plans didn't have a sidewalk, and we keep talking about mobility, but yet we didn't put a sidewalk in.
Sidewalks, yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. I'll be, I'll be quick. Elizabeth, I'm glad that you brought up the overlook of not being on the bridge and not going to be included, because the, and you brought up the historical aspect of it, and because the bridge is, as we know it, and the bridge that has always been is the bridge that is there. So to modify that in any way wouldn't, wouldn't really be true, so I'm very happy to hear that we're going to keep it as real as we can.
And this design is being, is going to the Texas Historical Land?
Yes, so since it is a historical landmark, we have to go through the Texas Historical Commission, and we are going for, I forget the terminology, but essentially, we're doing, we're sticking to the historical aspect of it, and it is not, it's, they call it like a no adverse or something like that, but it's going to remain, it's historic, so everyone will be happy. We don't have to do any other sort of mitigation to it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, do you have another question? Thank you all so much for the update.
Thank you, sir.
We will move on to 6A, the City Manager, Manager's Report, providing us an update on solid waste, update on the coming change in utility ability, and update on capital improvement projects. Madam City Manager.
Couple more included in there as well. So they got the fun ones. I get the hard ones. Obviously, we are in the middle of a conversion with TDS, and some of the, some of the comments, oh, gosh, some of the comments and concerns that we've heard is our receptacles aren't the same size. They're actually smaller. That's not true. These are taller and thinner, but they are still 96-gallon containers. Some folks have raised issue about quality. They say the bin is thinner. Also, not necessarily true, but if there's any issue with quality, it's covered by the provider's warranty, so they just need to call and... with quality, it's covered by the provider's warranty, so they just need to call and the, the receptacle will be replaced if there's any issues. Um, the, uh, TDS is Greenway certified. We've heard a lot about, um, how are we gonna be doing recycle? What are we doing? Are we doing the best that we can? For those of you who have visited the site or, or are planning to visit the site, you will be amazed at what TDS, um, can do with recycling. Um, finally, we do have some new routes and schedules and I'm gonna be able to move this clicker. There you go. Um, we do have some new routes and new schedules, so, um, we're going to a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, um, uh, schedule, uh, and Friday's schedule. And so folks are able to call the, um, go to cityofbashrop.org/pickup and, um, understand where their new schedules are. And also there is a, uh, an app that TDS has that gives you all kinds of information, notifications and reminders when it's time to take out your trash, et cetera, et cetera. Included in the contract is, um, some community cleanup services, so we will be planning those ahead of time with TDS and our plan is to launch what I call NIP, Neighborhood Initiative Programs, where we come in and bring all city services into a neighborhood to clean it up and those receptacles are paid for via the TDS contract, so really excited to be partnering with TDS. Uh, next big one is there is going to be a utility billing location change. Um, many of you don't know that City Hall is busting at the seams with, uh, staff, so we are moving from our current location at 1311 Chestnut to 600 Spring Street, which is nestled between the library and the post office, right across from the church. And that move will happen September 23rd. Um, the building has been undergoing renovation. That lease also includes the parking lots next to it. And so that was, um, council had identified the need for additional parking and so we will be able to dedicate those to public parking. We do have some improvements to make on those parking lots, they are prone to flooding, so Streets Crew and Facilities Crew are looking at some of that and we do have some final ADA improvements also to make at the building. And then, once that move is complete, we do have, uh, a staff member and potentially a second who will be housed in what was the utility business office and they will have some office space and a conference room and we will continue our shared services contract with the city in sharing HR, finance, copier, IT, et cetera, et cetera. Next is, um, streets. So we did do Hoffman Road, uh, and that was the black terrapave. That was a great application, good cure time, and so we're going to do benchmarking. This is the piece that is, that butts up against the county's chip seal and so we're gonna see how long the, um, terrapave adds to the lifespan of that particular street. The not-so-good news, um, we tried a new product called Terra Cool in Piney Creek. Um, I just want to, we've alerted the neighbors, we've been in touch with the HOA. This first application was what I'm gonna call not as expected. Um, the, uh, Terra Cool folks, um, have advised they're gonna give it a two-week cure time and then we will make any necessary corrections that need to be made to make sure the street is uniform and looks at, as it was intended. And so, um, the other part that's important to note is we had made a decision not to go to the super full, full, full white because that has the exact same effect with the glare and the heat, so it was a meet in the middle, but still I think we all experienced some missteps in our first application and so we've got to come back and make that right.
Yeah, my name is David Pham. I'm from Cedar Park and, uh, representative of Terrapave Wichita Park University of Texas. Um, so yeah, so we can, we play that, uh, so first I'm gonna show you, uh, the results so far, okay, of both streets. Uh, actually, um, it's not really the first application because it was raining on Friday that when we did that, that neighborhood, so we weren't able to finish. And also at around 2:30 and 3:00 PM, there's so many traffic coming in, so it's pretty much make us impossible to finish that, that whole neighborhood, so that's why we have to come back, okay? So, so far I'm gonna show you the, uh, okay, so first I'm gonna show you the Terrapave on Chipseal Road, okay? Next one? Okay, so this is what it looked like today. This is a picture from today. Next one? Okay, next one? Okay, I'm gonna play a little video for you. The reason why we do this is we're gonna put a 100% eco-friendly product that will make this street last for a very, very long time. It's a chip seal road. So, uh, what happened on Chipseal Road is you will lose the rock over time, okay? So, can you play the video of straight? The straight video? So, uh, yes, so, so, so right now this is what it looked like? You can't, you can't scratch that, 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 those rocks off. It gonna stay there for a very, very long time, okay? So this road probably gonna be the most, the longest lasting road in Bashrop probably. So, okay, let's go to the next one. Okay, so this is what it looked like now, okay? Okay, so this is the, uh, Terrapave Cool pavement on hot mixed asphalt, okay, in the neighborhood. Okay, let's, okay, so we, um, same thing as an eco-friendly product and we're supposed to lower the temperature of the neighborhood and also protect the, uh, the asphalt from oxidation and water, okay? So let's, let's go back to the other, this was taken today at around 2:00 PM, so if you, we go to the bare asphalt, it's 128 degree and you go, you go to a cool pavement, it's 108 degree. So that's about 15 degree change, you know? Okay? That, that was done today at 2 o'clock, um, because it was raining before that. Next one? Okay, so this was taken on the day that we did it, okay? So three different time, three different areas. So over time, the, the heat, the street will heat up, okay? So in the morning we did at one area at 95 and 105 and the same area at the 12:00 PM is 109, 124 and 112, 128 around. That's, that's around when this, the rain start coming in and then the traffic gets so much that we have to. Okay, next one? Okay, so that's what it looked like, um, okay? Close-up of it? Okay, let's, next one? Okay, let's play the video. The reason why we do this, we're not only gonna cool down the pavement, but we're gonna protect the street from oxidation and water, okay? So actually show you, this is a water test, okay? So if you put a water on it, it just stayed as a puddle, it would not seep into the pavement anymore. So what, because water is not seeping into the pavement, this pavement gonna last for a very, very long time because the water doesn't affect the, uh, the base of it and also the oxidation can get into the base, so that this, so, uh, we lower the temperature and we're gonna make your pavement last a long time. Okay, so next one? Okay, so this, I wanna show you a result, what we got from, uh, the Sea of Las Vegas, so we got a very similar result from the Sea of Las Vegas, okay? Around 15, they're much hotter there. Uh, so, uh, around 15 to 18 degree difference, okay? Uh, so, 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 so this is a different road and also in Las Vegas, so you can see that it's not pure white, okay? Um, so, uh, yeah. So, so, so this is a, a different lower temperature, so still, uh, uh, very similar results you can get here, okay? Next one? Okay, so can, can we bring up the T, the, no, no, the next one? Um, the terrapetech.com T, yeah, that one. No, 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 the other, the, the, yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so, last time I didn't say expectation very well. Okay, so can, can we go up a little bit? Up, 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 up. Okay, so we promised that we're gonna lower the temperature and that we're going to, uh, protect the street. That's exactly what this product, and a, and 100% eco-friendly, so that's what, exactly what this product has done so far, okay? So to make it, because we're not gonna make it pure white like that, it's gonna be, you still gonna see some streaks, okay? It's impossible to lay two layer on top of each other and you don't see a, a different color, you know? I mean, that's just physically not possible, but we will go in there, so we go up a little bit?
So, um, Mayor and Council, I'm gonna stop him right now because this is a discussion as it relates to contract delivery and I've already explained this is not an acceptable application aesthetically. It is, it is, it, it looks like the product was spilled on the street. I don't wanna go into it in detail, so please.
Sure, 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 absolutely.
Thank you.
We will make it as nice as possible, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can you go back to my PowerPoint, Colin? Um, I will say they did meet with the HOA and, um, so they have been proactive in trying to mitigate some of the, um, the bad press. Um, they have been very receptive and communicative with the, the property owners within Piney Creek, um, but, you know, this is one picture and again, this is not, I believe, what either the residents or staff expected of the application. Um, we go to Journey of Freedom Exhibit Fund. It's already been mentioned, the Harriet Tubman exhibit leaves us and, uh, there will be a reception for Ms. Opal Lee at the Kerr Center on Saturday, so I encourage anybody who can attend. It is a free event and I highly encourage the council to, uh, attend. I will be out of town, so will not be able to attend. And then finally, on the 16th of September, we do have the State of the City that is being hosted by the Bashrop Chamber of Commerce. Uh, many of you have already, if not all of you, have already been contacted for your interviews that are going to be incorporated into the video, uh, in vignette style as we go over everything that's happening in the city. Um, I have received some major concerns on social media about the cost and the attendance and I wanted to let everybody know that as soon as, the event is going to be filmed and as soon as the event is over, it will be posted on social media in its entirety. So those folks who were not able to attend will be able to view. Um, and it is much of the information that I cover at my Sit with Sil every month, which, uh, that is tomorrow at 7:30 here at City Hall. So, available for any questions.
Council, any questions? City Manager? Thank you. That wasn't all bad news, that was all really good news.
Those were the toughies.
We'll move to 6B, now receive presentation of the un-audited monthly financial report for the period ending July 31st, 2024. I was going to call Ms. McElwain, but I see Ms. Allen is on her way.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I have the honor of bringing y'all the comprehensive, comprehensive mon, monthly report for July.
Sorry, can you turn my phone?
Can you hear me? Okay. Um, this is just a performance at a glance. We'll be discussing each page as we go forward, including anything red or yellow. Um, as a summary, this is a comparison of all funds revenue to highlight all the red items. Uh, start with the general fund, one-time fund. This fund is not comparing apples to apples here. The projected is based on what we anticipated to spend. The actuals is based on expenditures. At the end of the year, we will do an accounting function to true that up, so that number will correct itself by the end of the year. Um, Development Services Funds is on here. I know y'all have had previous discussions with Edie in regards to this is the first year of the funds and our, um, projections comparing to actuals aren't really that close, as well as the Impact Fund, which continues to perform under. Overall, revenue is 4.8% of projected. In regards to expenditures, all expenditures are in line with projection. We are currently 15, let me turn my page, cause I can't see that far. Expenditures to projection is under by 15.7%. All the items that you see in red here pertain to capital projects. And these are all capital expenditures related and they're part of the 2024 bond issuance, um, that will replenish these funds based on the bond. Sales tax is running very close to projection. We're within 2% of projection. Property taxes while is running very close to projections. There will not be a lot of activity, um, for property tax for the rest of this fiscal year. We mostly see our movements towards December, January, February. General fund expenditures by department are in line. We're running about 98% compared to projections, as well as water, wastewater, they are within 1% of projected revenue. You will see a variance between June and July. That's just because of the billing cycle. There was actually, June bills were delayed, dated July 1st, so it caused a little variance between the months that corrected. Water, wastewater expenditures are 97% to forecast. Um, and the electric fund is running very close to forecast. This is the same as with the water fund, they bill date, um, Ju, July 1st and July 31st, caused June and July to be a little distorted. Hotel revenue is, um, within 13% of, uh, forecast above, as well as 62% below their expected expenditures. Development Services, uh, they are negative compared to forecast. This is the first year of reporting development service within its own fund, so we do have to do a little bit better job of projecting revenues for the next coming year. Uh, the positive for Development Services is their expenditures are staying in line with their revenue. While their revenue is not anticipating, reaching anticipations, they're at 80% of expenditure, so they're managing their funds well. And this is a summary of the legal fees paid as of, to date for FY 2024. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, wait, Councilmember Lee?
I don't have any questions.
Say again.
I don't have any questions for the financial summary, but I have a question for the City Manager.
Okay, now's your time.
I thought you were gonna give.
I thought you were gonna give us an update on the capital improvement projects.
You were right, it was shown on the agenda, but I did not put a PowerPoint. Uh, is the summary that was sent to the council? It was a summary that was sent to the council, I believe it was on Friday evening and then that was the executive summary, it's the capital projects you got before. I did not review it in the hour.
Are we gonna get that? Cause.
You got it on the writing?
I mean, we got it on Friday, but I thought we were gonna have a council discussion about it, about the capital improvement projects. It's on the agenda for discussion, so I was expecting an update for the public, but.
Sure, yes, we can, if you wanna go back and visit it. I don't have a PowerPoint.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you, would you rather wait for the PowerPoint?
So we have a, we.
Now have a budget meeting called for September 3rd, a budget workshop, so we can, we can talk about it there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Didn't mean to make you stay up there for so long. Is that, is that it? Councilmember Lee? Thank you so much. Now move to Citizen Comments. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody signed up to speak on Citizen Comments?
Uh, no, Mayor.
Thank you so much. We'll move to the Consent Agenda.
You, you had a. Oh, okay.
Say again?
There was a slip that was turned in?
They were, the slips have been turned in or out of, or out of specific?
Oh, okay.
I do have comments, but not for Citizen Comments.
Got it.
And before we move to Consent Agenda, there was one person who turned in a comment on one of the consent agenda items. Uh, we will not be able to answer her question, uh, Anna Lee Tully, but, uh, I will say that we'll, I will pass her question and comment on to our City Manager to give to our Library Director for, for response. Uh, moving on to the Consent Agenda, does anybody wish to remove an item off the Consent Agenda from the dais?
Yes, Mayor, um.
Wait, I got, Councilmember Foster, your light is on?
Uh, yes, please. Please pull 8A.
8A?
Just a correction of the minutes, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
I'm looking, I wanna pull, uh, 8C.
Does anybody in the audience wish to move an item off the Consent Agenda? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you will read the Consent Agenda exclusive of item 8A and 8C, which we will take up immediately after the Consent Agenda.
The Consent Agenda reads as follows. Item 8B, consider an act on Resolution Number R-2024-107, ratifying and approving an inter-local agreement between the City of Bashrop and Bashrop County regarding the construction of a communications tower for public safety purposes as attached in a A and ratifying a. and approving the conveyance by the City to the county of 2.205 acres of property known as Building Block 152 east of Water Street located at 2001 South Street to be used for the purpose set forth in such inter-local agreement as attached in Exhibit B, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8D, consider an act on Resolution Number R-2024-108 regarding a community services and off-site improvements agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry for the reimbursement of construction funds for the off-site improvements in the public right-of-way related to the construction of the new food pantry facility to be located at 1201 Pine Street, Bastrop, Texas, in the amount of $59,060.70 based on the in-kind donation cost estimate in Exhibit A, authorizing the execution of all necessary documents upon request and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 8E, consider an act on Resolution R-2024-106 for the creation of a public services policy for the Bastrop Public Library as attached in Exhibit A upon request and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 8F, consider an act on Resolution Number R-2024-111 for an inter-local agreement with Bastrop Independent School District in the City of Bastrop for planning review, building inspection and fire inspection services upon request and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice and meeting. This concludes the consent agenda.
Council, City Secretary has laid out consent items B, D, E, and F.
Move to proof.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll move on to Item 8A, consider an act to approve the following Bastrop City Council Meeting Minutes for: One, Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, regular meeting and joint meeting with Visit Bastrop Board of Directors. Two, Monday, August 19th, 2024, special meeting. And Wednesday, August 21st, 2024, budget meeting. Councilmember Fosser.
Yes, for the first agenda, page 27, the August 13th meeting, we just need a strike through on Kevin's arrival time. That was a copy and paste from page 37 on the August 19th meeting, so that little arrived 5:02. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the time arrival strike through.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fosser with that change. We have a second from Councilmember Plunkett, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to Item 8C, consider an act on Resolution Number R-2024-112, approve engineering professional services contract with Dial Development Services Limited, DDS, to continue to provide the services of construction inspection to a not-to-exceed amount of $200,000, and authorize City Manager to execute all necessary documents upon request and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a couple of questions about the amount. So on July 23rd, we did a Resolution 2024-95 to approve and authorize the execution of a contract with CC Carlton Industries, and then it said, it listed next to that, engineering firm Dial Development, in the amount of 3.1. So my question is, the $200,000, is that included in the 3.1, and we're just doing a resolution for it now?
CC Carlton?
No, for Dial.
So this, so this contract is for the construction inspection services that we receive from Dial Development, Dial Development Services. This is for his inspection services for all of our public improvement, be the Colony, be Agnes Street, be any of the inspections that we're receiving. This is just for his service. This is like a master service contract type deal where he's put in his hourly rates, and then we will bring back individual contracts, or unless they're underneath the City Manager's approval rate. But this, he will be inspecting the wastewater line for CC Carlton's doing the construction, and he's inspecting that construction.
So that's my question. So this was in regards to the FM 969 wastewater line extension.
No, this is, so we have...
No, no, let me finish my question. So the resolution we passed was for 3.199778, and Dial Development was mentioned as part of that. So what I'm asking is, is this $200,000 separate from that for other projects?
Yes, yes, I'm my apologies.
And the 3.1 is for the...
Yes, I understand your question now. Yes, it is for separate, separate... So CIP projects are our internal projects that we have to budget and then put forth money in our, whenever we take a bond or whatever the cost may be. So we, in that, we put his cost for inspecting our in that. This contract is for services that we receive from outside, so the Colony, the Valverde, right, they have a, they'll pay, these are pass-through fees. This is a pass-through from Valverde Development for public inspection fees that then will be put into an escrow account that these will be paid out of, his account. So what you'll see is this is like a master contract, and then we're going to bring back the individual for, I think he's going to inspect West Bastrop Village, Valverde, all of those public improvements that are going on.
Okay.
Yes, so sorry, so yes. So Agnes Street, for example. Agnes Street, when we bring that contract forward, that one will have a dollar amount, and then we'll bring back a separate one because we didn't plug that one into this, into that, but you'll see one for Robert Dial for Agnes Street for him doing the inspections.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
My apologies.
No, I'm good. If there are any other questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lee. Have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion, questions, seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to items for individual consideration of 9A, being considered an act on Resolution 2024-116 to the interim City Secretary and Assistant City Secretary in the Home Rule Charter, Article III, City Council, Section 3.09, City Secretary. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This question arose from our last meeting where we have an interim City Secretary. Our charter calls for confirmation of an official City Secretary. But just to keep everything above board, I am bringing forward Irma Parker to serve as the City Secretary as required by our Home Rule Charter.
Move to proof.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett. I have a second from Councilmember Meyer, just by hair. Any further discussion, questions relative to this item? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to 9B, receive a report from the interim City Secretary. Correction, is that now the City Secretary?
That is now City Secretary, yes.
We will strike the word interim from this introduction. Receive a report from the City Secretary of Sufficiency or Deficiency of a petition submitted in July 2024 to recall Mayor Lionel Nelson. Madam City Secretary.
Yes. Happy to see all of y'all today and address y'all. As y'all all know, we had a petition served to the City Secretary, and I presented the findings at the last City Council meeting and told y'all that there were some questions, and we were trying to figure out how we could resolve those. I did reach out to the Secretary of State's office, and they did submit a letter to me in response to my question. So we're moving forward with that. And I did send a letter to the petitioner on the 30th day, which was Saturday, August 24th, advising, in writing, with a return receipt, that the petition that was received for the recall of Mayor Lionel Nelson on July 25th, 2024. In order for the petition to be valid, certain information must be included as required by Texas Election Code, Chapter 277 in the City Charter. According to Section 10.07, power of recall, one of the signers of each petition paper must make an affidavit affirming that the statements made therein are true. Following the August 13th meeting, I mentioned I would be seeking clarification from the Secretary of State regarding the specific petition requirement outlined above and the City's Home Rule Charter. I've attached a response from the Senior Secretary of State Attorney for your reference. Our City Attorney has advised that only the signer's affidavit at a testation of truth must be notarized, and that a notary public would not need to go door-to-door to notarize every signature on the petition. As per Section 10.08, I have 30 days until August 24th to determine the sufficiency of the petition after it was filed. After reviewing the petition in accordance with state laws, the City Charter, and the penance expressed by our legal counsel, I have determined that petition does not meet the requirements for certification. Therefore, no further action is required by the City. If you wish to amend the petition, you may submit a supplementary petition within 10 days of the date of this notice, which is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Y'all all received a copy of that today via our City Attorney. This matter is in the hands of the petitioner committee, and we shall hear from them on or before September 3rd. That's my report.
Councilmember Lee, you have a question?
Question and a comment, and comments. So the first one was the date, so you gave us that, thank you, the third. And then I have a question about the 10-days process. Can you explain what that looks like? Because the petition was submitted to the City in the hands of the City. Does the petitioner now have to just get that back from the City? Because I would think that they can't use copies of the petition. Tell me how that works.
A supplement. So they could do one page, supplementing that petition that says the affidavit of the person that went, that, for each page, would you need a testation of truth from one of the signers on each page? So there could be one document that says, "I, Mayor Joe, whatever, did sign, saw it so page, and I'm saying I signed this and knew that what I was signing. Get it notarized, it's done." You could have one for each page. I'm this, I was a signer of page one of 95 pages, or whatever it is. So, but that's up to the City Attorney and how they're going to determine to do that.
Do you by any chance have the letter from the Secretary of State, or the correspondence from the Secretary of State?
Absolutely. We can certainly, I thought, I sent that through to the City Attorney, so, but I can certainly look that too.
No, what I'm asking is for public, for the public...
Absolutely. Everything I had is public.
No, to read tonight for the public, to read what the statement was from the Secretary of State.
No, I did not bring it with me, no, ma'am.
So while we can read it, because it's in possession of the City Attorney, it's a little bit conflicting, because the Secretary of State said the petition essentially was sufficient. However, there's a statement in there that says considering other law, and our City Attorney said our charter is other law. And so she could read it, but it, you know, it's a little bit confusing, and so I'll leave it to our City Attorney whether he wants to...
Summarize it.
Yes.
Thank you, City Manager and Madam City Secretary. I agree that reading the email from the Secretary of State would not be helpful to anyone. I don't, I don't think it's the best written document, and it's conflicting internally. But the substance was, it explained Chapter 277 of the Election Code and mentioned that there can be other law, which our charter is other law, and so you read those two things together when determining whether a petition's sufficient.
Summary works, thank you. So my next thing is a statement, if you want to take a seat in case anyone else has any questions. But, you know, this has been going on for 13 months, and I have to ask, at this point, when is it going to end? We need to be focusing on our budget. I'm concerned about the turnover in employment at City Hall, the fact that we lack infrastructure needed to provide service to developments and future developments. We need affordable housing, and a host of other things that we are placed in these seats to manage. Several Councilmembers have stated that $1 is too much regarding the alleged misappropriation of funds the mayor has been falsely tied to, which, by the way, and contrary to what's being spread in the public, the amount of missing funds from the audit was roughly $2,500, not $70,000 that I've seen all across social media and in print. The Visit Bastrop Board audit determined in regards to the missing $2,408, and I quote, "There was little to no documentation, and while these expenses were approved within our policy, it would be difficult to investigate further." The outside attorney hired by the City to conduct the investigation stated in her memo to the City and Council, and I'm quoting again, "The mayor denied any knowledge of misuse of public funds, and my investigation to date uncovered no evidence otherwise. Yet the City has spent upwards of $140,000 of taxpayer money to fight for $2,500, ultimately found to likely not be a misuse of funds. The cost to taxpayers is likely to rise to more than $165 as a result of the course of action taken by City Council members who are charged with ensuring the City is fiscally responsible for our money. Meanwhile, the City is unable to hire police officers needed to keep our City safe, staff to more efficiently provide City services to residents, or pay for infrastructure needed to meet the demands of development. Where is the $1 is too much mentality when it comes to the use of taxpayer dollars to continue this vendetta? This is not fiscally responsibility. It's been said that the mayor is in this situation because he was not truthful. I agree with that, up until the point where he was truthful, and the Ethics Committee made their determination. However, everything that has occurred after that, all the money spent, the burden to staff, our City Attorney, and the division in the community that this is causing is not on the mayor. Every meeting, we have a pastor or minister stand before us and pray over our sitting. They pray that God will lead the decisions we make and guide us in making the right decisions for the community. I do not believe that the intention of their prayers and the will of God is to guide us down a path of public humiliation of one another in a manner that destroys the mayor in this case and causes division in the community the way this effort has. Punishment number one, public embarrassment. The mayor made a mistake, a mistake that has been proven not to have caused detriment to City business. As a council body, we had every opportunity to spare the City the cost and the division we are currently faced with by handling this matter privately as a council body, based on the black-and-white determination of the outside attorney to avoid the 13 months of public scrutiny and ridicule I hear and see in public spaces. I offered this option multiple times to council, but it was rejected because members of councils insisted that he wouldn't learn his lesson if it wasn't made public. There's a lot of talk about him not turning over his personal phones, which he was not required to do by law. The City, however, acquired the phone information from the former CEO of Visit Bastrop, so they didn't need his personal phone. And in acquiring her phone, there was not one corresponding message between them that substantiated the accusations of financial impropriety. Punishment number two, having this knowledge, members of council still voted to file an ethics complaint because they said they didn't want to be judge and jury and would rather let the Ethics Committee make the determination if there was a violation of interference. The Ethics Committee made it very clear they would only pass judgment on whether or not the mayor impeded the investigation, and as we know, they ultimately determined that he did because of his intentional untruthful response, initial untruthful response, and pushback regarding admittance of the relationship. A reprimand was issued, and the committee affirmed they saw no... A reprimand was issued, and the committee affirmed they saw no need for additional action against the mayor based on the evidence presented for that offense. Punishment number three, members of this council decided they did, in fact, want to be judge and jury and stripped the mayor of his duties under the charter and restricted him and future mayors from fulfilling the role and responsibilities of the office of the mayor as a representative of the city, in spite of the Ethics Committee ruling and in spite of an overwhelming show of support from the community asking them not to do it. The will of those residents were ignored. And punishment number four, members of this council then decided to start and participate in a recall petition to get rid of the mayor. Members of the community who I and others have spoken to, who signed the petition, now deeply regret doing so. They felt they were not given accurate and/or complete information, they felt misled. Some felt intimidated because they have ties to the city, either personal or business, and fear retaliation if they did not sign. And when the option was given for residents to remove their names from the petition, it was tactically submitted to the city to prevent them from doing so. First John 1:9, "But if we confess our sins to God, he will keep his promise and do what is right; he will forgive us our sins and purify us from all wrongdoing." The mayor has confessed. I know that he has personally asked for forgiveness. I know that he personally has conversations with spiritual leaders in our community to be a better mayor. He has learned his lesson. He has been, and he has been forgiven for his transgression, and he has continued to bravely serve as mayor of the city in spite of what I am sure has been a difficult 13 months for him and his family. I'm not worried about the character and soul of the mayor because of 1 John 1:9. I am, however, worried about the soul of the city if this effort of persecution continues. Integrity and ethics are also revealed in how one treats others. It should not be in our spirit to destroy a person because of a personal difference of our disagreement. None of us are perfect, and we all make mistakes, some more forgivable than others. But the mayor has been punished and knocked down by these actions for 13 months. I would not want to be on the ground, kicking him down further, and God watching from above. What spiritual gratification and peace do you find within your soul as you continue to kick him while he is down? I am asking council to please drop further efforts on this petition and allow the mayor to finish his term so that we can focus on the business of the city. Moving on doesn't mean you are wrong in your feelings or beliefs, but it shows this community that your desire to protect the image and spirit of our city is more important than your desire to assess personal judgment. It's time to move this community towards a place of healing with leaders who are focused on the business of the city at Bastrok. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Meyer, this is still a business meeting, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Just, just one really super quick comment. You elected me. I am responsible for your money, public funds. So absolutely, $1 misspent is a dollar misspent. I will always stand up for that. I don't care what the cause is or what it is. Don't tell me $2,000 is nothing, because people that don't make much money, it's a lot of money. It's their tax money. So I will proudly stand up for $1 of public funds any day on any item.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Lee, your light is still on? Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Thank you. I submitted my report, but I'm just going to stand here so I don't have to walk back. I need to save my energy.
I understand. I understand. We will move on to item 9C, Consider An Act on Ordinance Number 2024-25, Ratifying the Ordinance Calling For an Establishment Procedures for November 5th, 2024, Special Election for the Purpose of Amending the Home Rule Charter Approved on August 8, 2024, Providing for Severability, Providing for Proper Meeting and Notice, and Establishing an Effective Date. Madam City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor and Council. At the meeting on October, on August 19th, we were rushing through all of those propositions, and the document that you had before you had formally numbered this and formally numbered that. So, we finalized that document, and because we posted and we didn't have an ordinance number with any of the verbiage that we normally put with an ordinance, I chose to do a ratifying ordinance so that we had a complete outline of what was, what was done. We had the first read on this date, we had the second reading on this date, we're ratifying so the citizens can see exactly what was going to be on that proposition for changes to the charter. And that's what was done, that document, some of the wording on the ordinance calling the election, it's wording that's been used over and over and over, and we just insert what needs to be inserted, and that's what we did. How it got convoluted, I have no idea, but the fact that I needed to get that finalized and to the translator to get the Spanish version and have that to our county elections administrator by this coming Friday, it was of the essence, and I wanted to tie everything up, so that's why it was rushed. The docu, there's other additional documents that we will get finalized according to state law and gets the signatures from the mayor, and those will be posted in the newspaper and online. Everything, we're working on getting everything for this election online with the information that we have to provide. So we were under the gun, as y'all were, in trying to get the information from the charter commission. So, we request your approval of this ratification.
Council City Secretary has laid it out. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I have a couple, a couple of questions. This is a, and I appreciate the email from our city attorney. This has been kind of messy, a little bit, the entire process, and we needed clarity on whether or not we were following the legal requirements for passing an ordinance on that. I'm not, I'm not casting aspersions on anyone, I'm just saying-
No, 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 we're fine.
-for the benefit of the public, that we'd received comments that there was a lot of information been missing, a lot of incorrect information, and now you feel confident we've cleaned all that up?
I feel confident, and I did discuss this with the city attorney. Every year before an election, the elections administrator says, "This is the times that we're going to have, that we're going to have early voting," and it's not always complete, and these are the locations. It's not always complete, because at the last minute, a building can't, maybe, it cannot be used. So, I talked to the city attorney, we're going to add some language that I've had in my other ordinances, it says, "Subject to change," because things do change. There was no Saturday and Sunday voting listed there. But, if there's a petition that's received by the elections administrator, that people want Saturday and Sunday voting, she will make that change and she will post that she's going to have Saturday and Sunday voting. But that wasn't in there either. But it can, it's subject to change. But as far as all of the things that we needed to do, we're fine. It's, there's nothing that was done that was illegal. That is the law procedure, they are the state mandated for us that go with that, and we're going to fill those out as required by law.
Thank you, thank you. And council, y'all, before we take a vote, y'all saw the email from our city attorney who, who lined out some of the concerns. Thank you so much. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Meyer, a second one from Councilmember Plunkett. No further questions or comments indicated. Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 9D, Consider An Act on Ordinance Number 2024-26, Ratifying the Ordinance Calling For an Establishment Procedures for November 5, 24, Special Election for the Purpose of Amending the Home Rule Charter Regarding the Enforcement of Marijuana Laws Adopted on August 19, 2024, Providing for Severability, Providing for Repeating Clause, Providing for Proper Meeting and Notice, and Establishing an Effective Date. Once again, Madam City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This was on the same evening, and the draft that we were working off of just had the proposal for the marijuana. It is now a proposition A, quite appropriate, we thought, but we finalized it, I wanted to ratify it again so that we would be sure that we had everything all together. Unfortunately, some of this was done after we came out of executive session, and the video was not working. So that was one of the complaints, that the video was not working, they did not hear what transpired. That's unfortunate, but overall, that happens. Sometimes there's little blips in the, the radio waves, so it doesn't happen. But this ratifies, this tries to correct everything, the minutes showed what transpired, the exact verbiage was listed in the audits, staff recommends approval.
Council, City Secretary has laid this out, I'm out. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Again.
I have a second one from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none indicated, Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to item 9E, Consider An Act on First Reading of Ordinance Number 20-27, Approving a Map Depicting Municipal Boundary, City Limits, and Extraterritorial Jurisdiction, ETJ, as Required by State Law. Mr. Barron?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm asking for you to adopt the official city limits boundary and extraterritorial ETJ map, Exhibit A, which is on your screen there. After researching, my team and I discovered a period in which no annexation maps were updated since 2011. Moving forward, the GIS department, as well as the city staff, will initiate protocols and policies to ensure that any annexations, bless you, or disannexations are reflected on a map entitled, "Annexation Map," and annotated with the following. Number one, the number and the date of the ordinance, a reference to the minutes and/or ordinance records in which the ordinance is recorded in full, if any. After which, the map will be brought before council for adopting the changes and/or changes. Once the map is adopted by council, a physical map will be available on display in the city secretary's office, as well as the engineering director, if any, as required by the Texas Municipal League. Additionally, State Bill 1303 requires the creation of, of the map and make publicly available a digital map, which we will host on the city's website at no cost to the public. I respectfully request for the approval of the city boundary and ETJ hard copy annexation map and hosted digital map as described. Thank you, and available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes, down there in the, I believe they, at one point at least called it Colorado Bend.
Yes, sir.
It's cross-hatched and in green. Wasn't that released from the-
Yes, sir. So we're showing both. We're showing the annexation and disannexation.
Okay, just making sure. So, right now, it's going to look like it's dis-
Yes, sir.
Disannexed, okay.
As of today.
Any other questions? Councilmember Plunkett, your light is still on, does that extend to your question? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So, to add, add on to that, out of the disannexations we have done, this is the only one that's in the one-mile ETJ that's crossed in green?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
Well, can you, can you repeat the question?
I, I'm wondering why that's the only area crossed in green for disannexation, because we've done several, and why are they not shown?
So that one's sort of a, a two-layer, because not only, so we annexed, we de-annexed and also released it from the ETJ. So it had a three-step process. There's a couple of other spatterings in the area around the one-mile ETJ where we have released from the ETJ, and we will make those corrections and bring that back.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, we're working on that right now.
So we're still working on the map?
There's a little bitty dot just to the east of-
Okay.
Next to, and that, that's an example of a release.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, can I say something really quick? This is the first process, and we went through the annexations and disannexations through a certain time period, which was the last meeting. And so we've included that. We have to have these separate layers, but I have to have a complete map and give that to the county elections administrator, so they have this on display at their election, so that if someone says, "I'm in the city, I should be included," they have something there that they can show them. This map is just the first of many that you're going to be seeing, and every time we add something and we take something away, it will be added, and we have to send these doc, we have to file this with the county, and then we also have to file it with the state, with the PUC, so that the city gets all of their sales tax, well, they, sales taxes from the controller. But we have to have all of these agencies at the state know what is in the city of Bastrok, so we get the, any franchise fees, anything that's collectible for sales tax or anything like that. So, this is our first step of getting this done, and then we're going to be filing this, and every time we make some changes, we'll file another, because there's fees and stuff that we're entitled to receive.
That's actually something we learned in the Land Use Essentials class, TML.
Well, and, and I couldn't find the current map, so I went, when I first got here, so I went direct to him, and I said, "I need my voters to know where they're supposed to vote." And so, it, we're trying to, we're making several changes to be as transparent as possible. You'll see some changes on the website, but this is one of the things that we're required to do by law, to have this available to our citizens, and, and like I said, we file, if there's a contract that goes with some of these properties, we have to file that as well, so that the people know that this is happening. So it's just another step that we're trying to correct, and we're setting the policies and procedures with the assistance of city staff and our city attorney.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossler?
Looks great. Thanks for taking the initiative. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fossler, I have a second one from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion, seeing none indicated? Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Barron, thank you so much for your expertise and professionalism, I really appreciate you, you've been a joy to work with.
Thank you, and thank you, City Council.
You bet, thank you. We'll move on to item 9F, Consider An Act on the First Reading of Ordinance Number 2024-23, Approving the Fiscal Year 2025 Annual Service Plan Update, Including Provisions Related to Assessments for Hunter's Point Public, Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, Approving the Fiscal Year 2025 Assessment Role for the District, and Containing Other Provisions Related to Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation, and Move to Include on September 10, 24, City Council Agenda for a Second Reading. Madam City Manager, it says Ms. McElwain, I imagine you're taking this?
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you.
I tried to correct the, this slide up on the screen. So, we are about the, we're going to talk about Hunter's Public Improvement and an annual service and assessment plan that is required by law to go through a particular process. We do have John with P3. P3 is the consultant that helps manage the, the funds and the transactions and tracking some of the information within Hunter's Crossing. Included in, in the service and assessment plan and the operations and maintenance is the payment for P3, the payment for the PIT attorney, and we'll go over some of those items. So, I want to give you the background of the PIT, because this is, for lack of a better term, a pretty messy creation. And I'm going through all the legal documents, and I was surprised to read one of the attorneys saying, "If the math works, the, the pass doesn't matter." Well, it matters to the folks that are being assessed. It, it truly matters to the folks that are being assessed. So, the district was created in December of 2003. The city approved ordinance 2003-35 to issue the initial levy of assessments. And to remind you, a public improvement district is just what it sounds like. There's going to be public improvements that are going to be created in a development. The developer and/or the city will sell bonds, and those bonds will pay for those improvements. Those improvements will then be paid back via an assessment to the property owners. Those assessments are normally done on a per-square-footage basis, so that everybody is created equal. We did things a little different in Bastrok. We chose to carve out residential from commercial. So, the initial was a 283-acre parcel, and the initial assessment for the capital, meaning the infrastructure, et cetera, was 11.9 million, just, just tad shy of 12 million. the infrastructure, et cetera, was 11.9 million, just just tad shy of 12 million. And then we added 5.4 million in operations and maintenance. That is where the—that's where some of the big unknown lies. And I will tell you, the Valverde PID will not have an operations and maintenance piece, and I will recommend to the council, any PID that comes before you, you really should only be considering capital, because there's an end to that. So the capital, at this point, there's total unpaid capital assessments of 3.498, just a tad shy of $3.5 million. There were two prepayments made, and that brings the balance down to 3.142, just a little shy of 3.2 million. The maintenance and operations started at 5.4, and to date, 58.63% of that, or 3.16, remains outstanding. It has been difficult to identify what the maintenance and operations was that was actually in that 5.4. We're going to go through some numbers here in a bit, and they were included in your packet in what is in today's maintenance and operations costs, but I suspect you're going to have a million and one questions that we may or may not be able to answer tonight. So to date, $2.2 million has been collected, and there remains an assessment of $2,280 on each residential lot. So in fiscal year '22, the city council adjusted the operations and maintenance supplemental services to 45 cents a square foot for commercial. The residential was kept at $350, I believe, is the amount. And so the O&M assessments can be adjusted annually, depending on what maintenance or operational need is needed in the district, and it may extend beyond 2030. So the concern that this just doesn't have an end is a very legitimate concern. So we'll go to today's—
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On the—so your advice to us is not include maintenance and operations in future PIDs. So help me understand, then, is the capital assessment would take care of the maintenance and operation? How would the maintenance and operation then get taken care of?
So when this PID was created, and when I created mine in Corpus Christi, you were not able to layer certain incentive packages. You couldn't layer a PID with a TIF, a tax increment, or you couldn't layer a PID with a MUD. You couldn't layer any of those things. Now you can. And so what happens is they use a variety of mechanisms to pay for things. The capital is the capital is the capital. We know how much is going to go in the ground. And typically, if there is an HOA, or there's somebody else who's going to be handling those things, that's who takes over the the maintenance, not necessarily of the capital, because those get turned over to the city. They get dedicated to the city, and they become ours, and, you know, they—they become an asset on our—on our balance sheet.
So the HOA would handle that, and we would just need—that's something they would have to work out. I mean, I've had my house since I was eight. So do all new developments now pretty much have an HOA?
Not necessarily. There are—I mean, it's—it—it really depends on the development style and the cost. Affordable housing, you're going to find less and less of the HOA. What you will find more and more are these—I mean, you—they're called specials in the industry, a special assessment, but there's an end in sight, because we all agree on the amount, and we can all understand when it goes away.
So if there is no HOA, then how does the maintenance and operations get?
So it doesn't. So most of the PIDs—or—I don't want to say the good PIDs, but the PIDs that work and do have an end in sight, it was only for the capital. The lift stations were installed, the lighting was installed, the sewer, and it works like any other development. When, you know, a development up here that installs 75 units up off of 95, they install the infrastructure, and then they turn around and dedicate it to the city. Then it becomes ours, and we maintain and operate.
Maintenance, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Correct. So we move on to today's service and assessment plan. The PID board met. There was a discussion about what the most minimal expenses could be on a revised service assessment plan. And so I will tell you, there is mowing services that are included in here, the legal fees, et cetera. That equals $114,000. And then we have debt, transfer to debt service of $72,400. There was a fence that surrounds PID property. Normally, that may have been an HOA expense, but it is on PID property, and so it was a PID expense, and the city went and borrowed more than $500,000 to build that fence. So we have bond debt to pay for, and so in that assessment is $72,400. Now, the assessments for the residential folks, it doesn't go up. Most of this assessment is passed on to the commercial. Any questions?
Well, clarification, you say the assessment doesn't go up. We actually raised the O&M assessment by $12 per household in—
In '22.
'22.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, so I guess you just talked about the fence. Why would the fence be levied for the—is the fence only surrounding the commercial property, or what's the—
No, the fence surrounds the entire PID property, and it mostly backs up to the residential areas. So, yeah, there's a lot of folks, if that fence went away, it was in deteriorating condition. If that fence went away, those residents would not have a back fence.
Right, but so why would the commercial then be responsible for the fence?
When there's a PID assessment, that the levy is across the board. When the PID was created, ostensibly, all of the property owners agreed to be in the district and assessed. Many of the property owners, at the time this PID was written, the legislation was very new, many of the property owners didn't even know there was a PID in place. Back then, we were only required to file it with the city secretary. Realtors don't know to come to the city secretary, and so property was conveyed without full knowledge.
Oh, sure. No, I understand a lot. But why would the residential not be assessed on the fence, but the commercial would be if everybody agreed to be in the—
So the residential is assessed. To the mayor's point, there is a small assessment to the residential component, nothing compared to what is assessed to the commercial. That was a decision this city council, this body, made when it reestablished a service and assessment plan to do the residential at a certain square foot and to do the commercial at a greater square foot. I think the multiplier is about four.
So—and when was that? That was at the beginning, or was that midstream?
That was midstream. I believe that service and assessment revision was 2019.
Okay, so pretty recently. So that transferred—I mean, is—did that transfer then all MNO, or was—I mean, was that just on the MNO for the transferring the, you know, more equal share between the two to the less equal share, or is that with the capital as well?
No, capital is its own.
Okay.
Capital is its own complete line item. So in 2019, the assessments were allocated on a parcel-by-parcel basis, to 27.43 acres of commercial, 24.53 acres of multifamily, 510 single-family, and then 38 undeveloped land. There was a parcel, and this is interesting, that was excluded from the capital assessment portion in 2019, and that is the Home Depot. So there's a—a lot of questions as we dig into the math, into a fair and equitable amount. And again, as you know, some property owners sued. The decision was in the city's favor to, you know, continue the assessments. So that's where we are today.
Is—I don't know. This is a difficult—I know it's a difficult task. It's a difficult question to ask even, but a lot more difficult task, I would imagine. But is there a way to get a full accounting of—of what has really been paid, by who, and—because it seems to me that the—you know, by extending this as long as we are now, that we're disproportionately penalizing those who got there first, you know, because they will have spent, you know, this much many more years, you know, paying that assessment, and it seems like they keep going. I would be really frustrated if if I were—especially if I were in on the beginning and had been paying this assessment this whole time, and then realized that, you know, now the goalpost is much further away than, you know, than what I signed up for.
You—you'll hear me say a couple of different times, and I know you guys have heard me say it, just because it's legal doesn't mean it's moral or doesn't feel right. And this is one of those in-your-soul, just doesn't feel right. When I read the case documents, and I read the PowerPoints, and I went through the history, even P3 Works—and John, please feel free to stand up—even P3 Works says the accounting prior to 2017 was very difficult. And so what makes this PID so difficult is, in the beginning, there was no payment. First of all, for a good PID to work, the city borrows the money and/or the developer borrows the money. And if the developer borrows the money, there are some very good protections put in place, so we know who's getting paid, how much they got paid, how much interest, et cetera, et cetera. And—and we've got some limits on debt sale, because that's what happens. They recoup their money, they sell the debt, and it's very much like what—you know, it's not bad debt, but it's secured debt, and so it's able to be sold. This particular PID has changed hands. The original developer, the agreement was they weren't going to make any payments until things went vertical. So raw land received no payment, and so those things were pushed out beyond what a normal PID payment would have been. If we would have kept all things equal, all payments would have begun at the same time, and we would have all been done at a particular point in time. And the developer could have passed those expenses on to—through the builder, through the lot sale. I mean, there was a variety of ways they could have passed those on. Not being able to see a lot of those closing documents, I can't tell you that he didn't do—or he or she, they didn't do just that, because—I don't know. So when this was—I'm going to say sold, and John, please correct me—the next developer, there's an amount that's owed that still hasn't been collected, and it's an amount that's based on the original large amount, and it hasn't all been paid, because said developer who borrowed the money didn't make the payments when he owned the land. So when you say those things out loud, that's where the, ugh, there's a gut check that we have to do.
But can't we also check with the—the appraisal district or the, you know, a tax assessor to see, you know, what monies were sent back to the developer that would have came from the property owners? I mean, it was assessed, and it was paid, and it was remitted to somebody. I assume it didn't come to the city. Is that correct?
So it does. The remittance comes to the city, and then the city turns around and—
Oh, okay. Well, then, at the city, we should have that, those remittances, right?
So we do have—we do have some accounting. The service and assessment plan has been reset a few times, and so—and then, you know, staff records and where are things located, those things get a little bit hairy, and it has been very difficult to reconcile to the penny.
I'd take to the 100K.
Yeah, no. I got you.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. So I've read documents on city side, and I've heard the other side of the story from the people. And to say that this is messed up is putting it lightly. I can't see continuing a bottomless pit to people. I just can't see that. I—I know years ago, my development was almost in a similar situation where there was no end. Absolutely. Now, thank goodness in court, we won, so that was ended. However, I—I don't see an end—for the commercial especially out here. So I know we have the—the right to not accept the assessments, and I'm just going to ask a hard question. How—how do we get rid of the PID? Like, how do we dissolve this? This is just—we got to do something to make right.
So dissolving the PID is—is the easy part. 51% of the property owners would stand up—the mayor's in that subdivision. 51% of the property owners would stand up and say, "Get me out of the PID," and the PID dissolution process begins. The debt must still be paid, and so there is debt outstanding, and the debt total is about 6.2 million when you consider the O&M. The scary part about the O&M is it is really at the whim of the PID board and the council. So if there is an identified need that needs to happen, and we at the board feel that it's a need, and we say, "Go ye forth and make it happen," we come and tell the council, "We really need this to happen." The council approves the service and assessment plan, and those assessments go out. It is a public meeting. The property owners have a right to come, but as you know, public meetings are not well-attended. And so, you know, there's—there's that side of the coin. So the single-family lots are $380 a lot, the capital assessment piece. Commercial lots are 71 cents a square foot. Multifamily lots are 68 cents a square foot, and undeveloped lots are 68 cents a square foot. So the undeveloped lot piece didn't happen in the original sale. There was no payment assessment, et cetera.
I under—I—I get it. I'm just—there's absolutely no way that—that I could even approve—think about any assessments continuing on. It's—what about the developer in this? Don't they have—I mean, shouldn't they? It's been passed on three times, right, from the original—
Well, at this point, now the developer is receiving payments, because they—they borrowed the money, and allegedly, there's still money owed, so.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. By law, we have to approve the assessment, right? That's what you said?
So you don't have to approve the assessment, but somebody is on the hook for the assessment. And so if you don't approve the assessment tonight, the city—the debt obligation—I mean, I know John will stand up to tell you, "No, the city doesn't have to pay it," but I wouldn't tell you to reneg on a debt. We just got an improved bond rating.
Yeah, I agree. And then my second question is, you didn't really say, "How—how can they get out of it?" How—how much of a—how much—because they have to pay to get out of it. They can save 51% of the residents going out of this PID, but the debt still has to be paid, and those residents have to pay that debt, yes?
Yes. Or—or the city takes on the debt.
And how much is that debt again?
So the operations—well, so there's $5.4 million that's owed in operations and maintenance. I don't have a reconciliation of that 5.4, because we do an operations and maintenance plan every year, and so, for example, this year, it's $221,000 or so, which is why there's some unknown aspect of it. If tomorrow, the council decided, "Er, ix-nay, we're not going to do this anymore," we would still owe the about 3.2 million in the capital debt. That's—that must be done, and then we would have to take care of this amount. We'd have to take care of that 221,000, which is mowing and et cetera, et cetera, so.
So I don't know if you're having conversations about it. I know that, you know, the residents that I have spoke with want it. I also read in the packet that the board approved the assessment, right? I was reading for something that said 42, but it was unanimous. They understand. I don't think the assessment is the issue. It's the end of the—how much longer do we have to do this? It's more of the issue from—is my understanding, and that boils down to paying off the debt.
And I think that's a valid point, and I—I really firmly believe the board—I mean, as we go through it, when you're told that the PID has certain responsibilities, which it does, and the PID has a board of directors who are entrusted to make sure those responsibilities happen, when you're told there's a derelict fence that the residents are complaining about, or there's improvements to the pond, there seems to be a responsibility that the PID do that, and then that happens through a revised assessment. They will ask city staff, "What are the engineering costs? What are the—you know, what are the costs for the improvements, et cetera, et cetera?" We come up with a number. We make those presentations, and then there's decisions made at that table.
Yeah. Thank you.
There's a lot of unanswered questions here that we've—we had—we had placed to our attorney that had been working on this PID attorney been working on. I don't believe he's fully answered all of those questions.
No, he's out of the country till the end of the month.
I think—I think we are obliged to get those answers prior to us making any decision on this. I certainly don't want to forego any responsibility that—that we have as a—as a city council or as a city, or that the PID board has under—the law, because there could be serious consequences if we don't abide by—the attempt to abide by the law that's been placed out. I would like to suggest that until those questions are answered, whether or not to everybody's satisfaction, but at least are answered, that we might want to table this for right now.
Make a motion to table 9F.
So there—there's—
Hold on. I have a—I have a—I have a motion—
Sorry.
Hold on, I have a, I have a, I have a motion on, on the table.
Second.
I have a second now. Further discussion is indicated. Madam City Manager.
So we're running up against, um, we're running up against a couple of things. One is, um, we have a budget meeting set for September the 4th. This is the perfect and ripe opportunity to have that discussion. Um, the attorney is answering sporadic emails, so I will make sure we, we get a full answer at that point. Um, we've got to get the assessments to the tax collector in order for those bills to go out. You know, they, we talked about it earlier. They could go out under a different, uh, method. Collection prob, collection rate probably decreases at that. But, you know, at a September 15th, et cetera, et cetera. Um, at, at this point, from the conversation about the operations and maintenance plan, the one, the, the few things that are absolutely required right there are the debt service and the legal and admin support to the PID consultant. Those are, some of those contractual services are absolutely required. I would have to talk to our parks and streets and drainage crew because a lot of this is in streets and drainage because it is against the drainage pond. Is this work that we can absorb? So that at least this assessment is reduced by, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or so until we have some, some plan in place as a city on how we're going to handle this in the future.
I think what, whatever we do to, to mitigate some of the concerns while still, uh, abiding by, uh, the laws that we, that we have to abide by is, uh, I think is an excellent, uh, suggestion. I, I'm going to suggest we make sure that this is on our next council, uh, agenda for discussion, whether it be for the budget consideration or for regularly scheduled meeting. But, uh, and we do need to get it resolved, but we need to get it resolved after attempting to provide the answers that the neighborhood, uh, is asking for, both on the commercial side as well as on the residential side. But we have a, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none indicated. Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion to table is passed unanimously. We will now move on to 9G. Consider an actual resolution number R dash 2024 dash 100 for the disannexation of land from the city's one mile extraterritorial jurisdiction for 2.03 acres of property known as Tahitian Village Subdivision, Unit 5, Block 1, lots 20, 21, 22, 50, 51, and 52, located in the one mile ETJ of Bastrop County, Texas, upon request and providing for findings of fact, repeater, severability, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Ms. Andres.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, this item is back before you. This is a petition for release for 2.03 acres of property known as Tahitian Village Subdivision, Unit 5, Block 1, Lots 20, 21, 22, 50, 51, and 52. It was, or it is located in the, or was located in the one mile ETJ of Bastrop County. As you know, the Senate passed Senate Bill 2038 that allows for property owners to petition for release. Um, this particular piece of property was actually heard previously at the July 23rd, 2024 meeting. Um, we were recommending denial. However, council did vote in favor of release. So therefore we have this resolution before you tonight so that we can memorialize the action that was taken at the dais at the July 23rd meeting.
Any questions for Ms. Andres?
Move to approve.
Well, before, before we go, I have one, uh, person signed up to speak on this item. I'm trying, only wishes to speak if the action is different from the decision on this, on this item.
I was confused to see it on the agenda again, that's why I'm here. Cause I, since you'd already voted, but I, I now understand, I think apparently it's some procedural thing that you want to vote.
Thank you. Uh, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the release.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee. I have a second from Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion indicated? Councilmember Fossler.
Um, just a note of clarification, the pages 316 to 328, they don't, they relate to the previous meeting, right? So they don't relate to the property off 812. There's like 10 pages in that whole document. Yeah.
Okay, so that's a good question. So the reason why we brought this back before, and, and this will help Mr. Limeberry too, is that actually our attorney, um, Resin, reached out to us. And because the action was taken at the dais, he wanted a new resolution to come forward that just further clarifies that this property was in fact released. And it's independent to Mr. Limeberry's property.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, of course.
Seeing no further questions or comments indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. You want to keep your chair? Thank you. Thank you. We will move on to item 9H. Uh, consider an actual resolution number R dash 2024 dash 113 for the disannexation of land from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction for 099 acres of property known as Addison Acres, abstract number A45 Litten, located at 5599 FM 535 Cedar Creek, Texas, in Bastrop County, Texas, upon request and providing for findings of, findings of fact, repeater, severability, effective date, and proper notice. Ms. Andres.
All right. Yeah, so this is an additional petition that was received by the city secretary's office for a piece of, it's located, here, I'll pull up the map. So it's located east of FM 535 and south of State Highway 21. This particular piece of property, it's not within any CCN boundaries of the city of Bastrop. It's also not within, or this property is located within Area V of the ETJ, which per the 1445 interlocal agreement that we have with the county states that we are not the regulatory authority for any subdivisions or, um, any further development permits. Um, so therefore, um, staff is recommending that, um, council take action.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Fossler. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated. Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 9I. Consider an actual resolution number R dash 2024 dash 114 denying the disannexation of land from the city's one mile extraterritorial jurisdiction for 2.00 acres of property known as Nancy Blake, as abstract number A98, located at 1285 West State Highway 71, Unit A, Bastrop, Texas, in Bastrop County, Texas, upon request and providing for findings of fact, repeater, severability, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Ms. Andres.
Yes, sir. This was another petition that was received by the city secretary's office for the removal of two acres of property. This particular property is located west of State Highway 21 and south of State Highway 71 West. Um, this property is a little unique because it is located within the one mile ETJ of Bastrop, um, which means per the 1445 ILA with the Bastrop County, the city of Bastrop has the regulatory authority for the subdivision applications. Additionally, this property is within the city of Bastrop's wastewater CCN. And additionally, this property falls within the city of Bastrop's sign jurisdiction. Um, that's basically a sign jurisdiction that's located about 720 feet from the center line of the adjacent main lane of State Highway 71. What that establishes is the regulatory authority falls to the city to regulate the types of signs being placed on the property such as billboards. Um, removal of this property from the one mile ETJ will remove the city's ability to regulate further subdivision of the land or sign applications on the property. However, if it is removed from the ETJ, the city's wastewater CCN will still apply. Um, but finally, similarly to the previous property, if it is the will of the council to remove this from the ETJ, then I will bring back a resolution at the next available council meeting authorizing the release.
Questions? Uh, Councilmember Lee.
Uh, yes, I have a question. Come on back up to the microphone.
Yes, ma'am.
So on the, um, in the packet, the letter from the applicant, he wrote on the affidavit, on the affidavit, the applicant says, "The property should not be in the ETJ of the city of Bastrop." Are they disputing the fact that it's in the one mile ETJ? Cause he specifically wrote that on his letter.
Um, per the meeting that I was able to have with the property owner and the property owner's representative is here. Um, this came into the ETJ back in 2011 when we did the development agreements for annexation. That pushed out the one mile ETJ and that's when it came into the one mile ETJ. But I guess at that time, he was not made aware that he was then incorporated into the one mile ETJ.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got it. Makes sense. Um, so I think I Googled this answer. What, so if they, if, if they're in the one mile ETJ and they opt out? I heard you say water. They're in our CCN, right? Wastewater?
Yes, ma'am.
So we would still take care of their wastewater?
Well, so the certificate of convenience and necessity does give us, um, first rights of refusal for wastewater service. So if they came to us and we had utility service available or if it was an equitable solution to extend wastewater, we would be the service provider. If not, then there could be maybe an alternate solution. Yes, ma'am.
They would have to get a water well or whatever you call it.
Septic, most likely.
Septic tank.
Yes, ma'am.
So if someone were to, in our ETJ and they were to opt out and they said, hey, but I still want you to take care of my wastewater, then does that become a negotiation or how does that work? It does. It becomes a negotiation.
Sort of. Um, because they're in our CCN, we're required to provide. Um, and required to provide is minimal service. If they're asking for upsizing or larger, I mean, the city has the option to not participate. So 50/50 is the best answer I can give you and it depends.
And then their request, how do we know that upfront? Cause they're just asking to be removed.
We don't and we're all, we're all sort of rolling the dice.
Trying to figure out.
It's interesting to note, as I mentioned to the council, a lot of the ETJ removals off of 71 are billboards. And guess who's submitting some of these now for the petitioners? Billboard companies. So we will see a proliferation along 71 because the county doesn't have the ability to regulate signs. That falls to the city.
That is correct.
So I, I, we had a discussion about this at TML and I, you know, my dilemma with denials. But I, I wanted to get some input since this has been going on a little while. And they use a different wording for it. Um, instead of denying the option for cities would be not to consent, which is kind of the same thing as denying, I guess. You're just using a softer term. Uh, but not to consent to the disannexation. And then of course, after 30 days, I think it is that it just falls off. So, I mean, I get it, especially if we're going to be providing services. Um, but we don't know that we're going to be providing services. So it kind of makes it hard to make a decision.
So in that particular area, we, we are having a proliferation of development meetings in that area. And so there is, um, there's a car dealership, a hotel, a very large big box store um, in that area who would potentially extend. And at the point that they'd want to connect, there'd be some, you know, pro rata fee, depending on what it is they're connecting. But, you know, again, this creates the issue of the hopscotch effect. If they're out, then, um, at the point that I need some easements, I'm going to have to pay for it instead of going through the normal plating process and being able to exact it as part of our master plan. So we run into, we run into, you know, we run into some issues, but it is up to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions. We do have somebody scheduled to speak on this. It says in comment, Lisa Tantaksan Anukich. Did you all right?
You did fine. Tan is fine though, if you'd prefer.
Well, I've said tank in the past, so I'm just, yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter tonight. Uh, my name is Lisa Tantaksan Anuki. I'm a fourth generation Bastropian. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my, behalf of my father, Oscar Castle, who's been a resident of the city of Bastrop for over 80 years. My father's the owner of this, uh, property we're discussing at 1285 West Highway 71. He was not aware that the property had been taken into the ETJ. I think back in 2011, uh, some voluntary, uh, submission to the ET, ETJ by the Duff family is what caused the one mile, oops, I'm sorry. The one mile ETJ on this property. So he was not aware of that until recently. Um, he, he, he never was notified. He didn't sign anything. And he's never wanted the property to be in the, uh, city's ETJ. Uh, as far as your questions about the, the services, that's a two acre, uh, piece of land. It has some buildings built on it already. It does have a sewage system, uh, um, septic tank, yes, septic tank and water well as well. So, um, you know, that's what they're using. I suspect that's what they would continue to use. The property's not very big. It's a pie shape. And that's what, I don't, I don't think that would be a problem. Um, on September 1, of course, we all know, the Senate Bill 2038 went into effect. The bill was passed by the 88th legislature, giving property owners the opportunity to request to be released from the ETJ and the one mile ETJ. Uh, my father, uh, filed the petition for release. And I'm asking that you don't deny it. I'm asking that you consider approving this petition and release the property from the city's ETJ and the one mile ETJ. And that's, that's it. And I thank you for your consideration.
Any questions for the resident? At, at some point in time, I will get your name correct, Lisa, so.
It's very difficult, I know.
I understand, but I'll get it right one day.
Thank you.
Lisa, would, would your parents, and you probably can't answer this right now, but would they be amenable to perhaps an easement or at least something that should we have to extend wastewater down the front? We're not going to have to go pay through the nose.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to ask him about it.
Yeah, because that's really for us from a master planning perspective. Um, it's harder to cross a donut. It's harder to cross a hole.
Right, right.
Um, so I, I think, um...
I'm sure he understands that as well, but, yeah.
And so in other cities, we have agreements where we say, okay, we're going to extend water line there. We get an easement. We get some fees from you. I'm sure we could work through that. And if we don't connect within 10 years, is the statute still 10 years on? If we don't connect within 10 years, you get your land and your money back with interest.
Right. Well, I'm sure, you know. He, he's a real estate guy, so he, he knows the works of that as well. So I'm sure he would be, you know.
Councilmember Meyer.
So, um, what I think would be a really good idea is to table this and let Lisa and Sylvia work this out of how it can work out with the easements. Bring this back to the next meeting with things being worked out. And, and perhaps then we can go ahead and let you out of the ETJ. Would that be agreeable to, to do that?
Sure. I mean...
Good Sylvia.
Is staff okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Can I make a motion to table this item?
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
And we, we can put it on the, on the... Yes. Yes.
And I have a second from Councilmember Fossler. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none indicated. Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Passed unanimously. This item has been tabled. Uh, we'll move on to executive session, item 10A. The city council shall convene and close the executive session under Government Code Section 551.0711A. Consultations with attorney on pending or contemplated litigation, imminent domain proceedings pending in the Bastrop County Court at Law Number 1 and Section 551.072, deliberations about real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. A deliberation open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the government body in negotiations with a third person. Case number 20 dash 20464, City of Bastrop versus Palms Property LLC. Case number 2020462, City of Bastrop versus Baham Interest Limited Partnership. Case number 2332837, City of Bastrop versus Air Hard Legacy Partners LTD. And cause number 21 dash 20690, City of Bastrop versus Reed Sharp and Cindy Sharp. Item 10B, the city council shall convene and close the executive session under Government Code Section 551.0711A. Consultations with attorney on pending or contemplated litigation regarding engineering and construction. attorney on pending or contemplated litigation regarding engineering and construction contracts related to wastewater treatment plant number 3. It is 8:40. Council's in executive session. It is 9:17. Council is back in an open session on items 10A. We have a motion, I believe.
I move, I move to authorize the city manager in consultation with the city attorney's office to execute a settlement agreement and all necessary documents to resolve the matter of City of Bastrop versus Palm Properties LLC, case number 20-2464, and City of Bastrop versus Palm Interest Limited, case number 20-2462, based on the proposed settlement value of $272,956.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee. I have a second by Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Does that sound possible?
No, but I don't think your microphone's on. Your microphone's not on, I think.
Oh, my.
Yeah, the internet can't hear you.
It's for the audience. All right, council, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We have another motion on this agenda item?
10B.
On 10A.
That's on me.
I've got motion on 10A. I move to authorize the city manager in consultation with the city attorney's office to execute a settlement agreement and all necessary documents to resolve the matter, City of Bastrop versus Urhart Legacy Partners LTD, case number 23-21837, based on the proposed settlement for an additional payment of $40,876 and no cents to the property owner.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Seeing no further discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 10B, where I believe we have a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to send a letter to KSA Engineering consistent with the discussion in executive session terminating the contract for convenience.
We have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fossler. Seeing no other discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Once again, motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to item 12.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. We are adjourned.